Good evening. Today is Monday, June 2, 2025. It's 7:00 PM. I'd like to call to order the regular Board of Selectmen's meeting.
Troy Lamir.
Paul Harrington.
Todd Archalashi.
Glenn Albanese.
William Hester.
Candy Perez.
William Palzum.
Selectman Moreno is excused. Please join me for the pledge allegiance.
To the flag, in the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
I forgot it was that close. I did one after the parade.
Agenda review? Anyone have any? Candy?
Yeah, I'd just like to ask you all where you might, if you want me to make this an agenda item, or if you'd like to discuss it under, I guess, or during the town manager's report, or where else on here. But I thought I would do it here, but I think we need to talk about the, what happened with the referendum with two parts of it. Because we are responsible in some ways through the, whether it's a fair election or a fair referendum, along with town manager registrars and the town clerk. So I wanted to talk about two things with that. So I could make a motion for an agenda item, or I could do it like I said in another part. But I wanted to make sure that I do this in a way that's productive.
So we can put it as an agenda item under... Wouldn't really be new business, would it?
If you want to go, you could do like a six and eight.
Okay.
Do you want to do it right after town manager?
Sure, we'll do six, under town managers. Report, item A will be referendum discussion.
So I make a motion to add to the agenda discussion on the referendum held May 27.
Do we have a second?
One second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Six oh? Anything else? Moving on to item number four, the approval of minutes of our regular meeting on May 19.
Make a motion to approve those minutes?
Second.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you. Troy, any discussion, corrections?
I have a correction.
Okay.
I ask to amend the May 19 minutes as presented. Item nine, boards and commissions. I ask that subsections two, three, four, and five be deleted. The applicant names, board, or commission titles, party affiliations, seat type, and term and date were all omitted at the May 19 meeting and should not appear in the minutes. Item nine, subsection one, a resignation was acknowledged. Item nine, subsection six, an appointment was unanimously approved. Both should remain. This correction should be made to reflect the accuracy, accountability, and transparency of the May 19 meeting. The corrections will also coincide with the recorded May 19 meeting where Selectman Lamir mentioned only that there were four applicants for consideration.
Okay, do we want to table these minutes to have them corrected? Or do you just want to make a motion to remove those sections?
If you could just delete them, I don't think we need to table them.
The other action would be that, would have to be on your boards and commissions, that the four people are now entered into step one tonight, and not step two.
Well, appointment.
Because if we're taking out, we're recording them being, right? If we're taking out them being on the first step as a nomination, taken out of the record, then that means that they would have to start over now.
Yeah, if we deleted them.
Okay, yeah, if they were never mentioned, the names were never presented.
You sure I didn't say the names?
No, you did not. The names, I was not present. I listened to the, I listened to the meeting.
Mistake on my part.
And I did have an applicant that was interested in a board and commission. She did reach out to me to find out what the status of her application was. It was never mentioned in the meeting. I reviewed the minutes of the meeting again on YouTube, and it was, the names were never mentioned, and they should not be in the minutes as presented.
I apologize.
Okay.
Since I made the first motion, I think we should table this until we can actually, so I make a motion, we table the minutes until we can actually double check to make sure.
Okay.
I grab it, hold off. Somebody can double check and make sure that it was, whether they were mentioned or not.
Okay, there's motion to table. Is there a second? Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
All in favor of the motion?
Yep.
This is the table.
The motion to table. All in favor of table? Again, sorry, one, two, three, four. Upstate?
No.
Or opposed?
No, it's a test.
Okay. The minutes from May 22.
That was a quick meeting. I make a motion to approve those minutes.
Okay, is there a second? Thank you, Bill. Any discussion, corrections, or additions?
I just sort of mentioned this for the record, for the TV, and for subsequent. That was just, special town meeting was for the sale of Walmart Street.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
All right, we just, let's stay.
Five oh one. Item five, citizens' comments. The Board of Selectmen welcomes public comments. Speakers will be limited to three minutes. I may speak once this round. Just hit the right microphone button to turn it on. Perfect.
Good evening, Frank Oliveri, 108 Shore Drive. Something very interesting happened this past week. We had Memorial Day, where we had over thousands of people on Main Street celebrating the parade, and in 24 hours, nobody showed up. It's a big problem in this town for you guys to figure out in the next couple of months or year, where this town is going. That is a big problem. The way I look at it, nobody won, nobody, nobody won. And what you were saying, that you're going to bring up to discuss, it's a big, big problem. I hope yous can solve it. I hope this town can come alive again and show its patriotism to do everything that's necessary because it's being citizens. I don't have an answer. Surely like to work with you, but it's a big, I look at it as a very big problem. So, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Frank. Anyone else wish to speak? Yep, you're good. Yep.
Good evening. Michael Farrell, 147 Shore Drive. Two quick things. First of all, a big thank you to you guys for the budget. Dan, if you do, Dan, if you don't, but I recognize your hard work didn't come easy. Thank you for what you've done for the town. Speaking of doing things for the town, I have two issues I'd like to bring up that I believe are outstanding safety issues. I live at 147 Shore Drive, so I go up and down East Wakefield quite a bit. In January of 2024, I sent in an email through the town portal with several pictures of the fence, what is left of the fence, and three barriers that are fallen over, and a dilapidated-looking lot that the town of Winston owns. This lot is at the corner of Byrd's All and Hurlbert Street. I asked that the fence be fixed. I asked that the barriers be picked up, that it be given some attention. If we're going to send blight officers out into the public, and we're going to send code enforcement officers out into the public, we should care enough about our own properties to clean up our own issues. That was January of 2024. In March of 2024, I sent in a follow-up. I ran into Jim Rollins at a sewer, sewer commission meeting, and he said, "Yeah, we got to do something about that." He said, "We were thinking of making it into a calming park," or whatever. Apparently, we need calming parks nowadays. I don't care what you do with it. Nothing happened since January of 2024. So I sent in another email in January of '25. It went unacknowledged, and nothing has happened. However, I'd like to share with you another sidebar to this story. In the middle of winter, I went by that parcel, and there was two Public Works trucks there, a backhoe, a whole gaggle of DPW, folks, and I was so happy to see one of the fellas was actually standing there with the open butt end of the top fence rail in his hand. It looked like he was leaning on it. Went, did my business, came back a half hour later, everybody was gone. There's a spring there, comes up, creates ice in the sidewalk on the other side of the street. Sand was spread, the backhoe tracks, not a thing done to the fence. So it's now been a year and a half since I sent this thing in. This, I'll give it to you, I'll pass it around. This is the lot. What that doesn't show at the very top end of that is the top rail of that fence is now protruding right into the middle of the sidewalk at belly button level. You won't know that now because it's completely covered with brush, but at that height, an unsuspecting mother with a stroller might think that's just a bush and try to push it aside. It's going to hit a kid right in the head. A skateboarder, a jogger, anybody that's traversing on that sidewalk is going to get the open end of that thing. That's been there since January of 2024. Not to mention the fact that it is a colossal insult to the people who live in one of the busiest corridors of residential properties in this town, to come home at the end of their day, every day, and see that horrible-looking lot, notwithstanding the safety issues. Can we please get ahold of somebody in Public Works and, first and foremost, protect the town from liability and fix the blaring safety issue that the guy at DPW was holding onto and then just left? You shouldn't need Mike Farrell to come down here tonight and preach ad nauseam about this crap. That has to be addressed. Not only is it an insult, and it's an eyesore, and it's a blighted property that the town of Winston owns, it is a safety hazard, has to be taken care of. Stop insulting the people in that neighborhood, not you folks. I have the utmost of respect for you. We need a huge culture shift in the people who work for this town, for Public Works, who collect a paycheck and allow something like that to continue to go on. Somebody in management has to say, "That's not good enough. That's not the way we're going to run our town."
You're over time, so if you could wrap up.
Sorry. One more thing, real quick, and I should note that the town manager has already engaged with me on this, and I appreciate his time. The sign in the lobby of Town Hall. Punctuation errors, letters missing, letters half out of the sign. I know we don't have any money, but it doesn't take any money to open up the cover of the sign and fix the damn writing, please? If we're going to invite business owners and property owners to come and join themselves in our community, can we have a little bit of pride in our flagship building, Town Hall? And by the way, Mr. Town Manager, the call lights still do not light up in the elevator, and that's a safety issue, because if you're stuck in an elevator and you need to communicate with the police, EMS, or fire department, they need to know what floor you're on, you can't tell, because our lights have been out for months. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Glad this was adjusted to you. One of my neighbors knew he wasn't going to be here for the vote on Tuesday, or the weekend. And they, a month ago, they asked, they live in Florida, they asked if they can get a mail ballot sent to them, and they were told no. I don't know what the ruling on that is. They were told they had to be in town either to, you know, pick up a ballot or the vote on Tuesday. But they told him, your office went and mailed him a ballot.
We'll look into that and get back to you. Thank you. Move on to item six, town manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Where did we get it? Um, I'll start that, obviously, as all of our residents know, and obviously, the board knows, that we officially adopted our fiscal year budget last Tuesday, and anyone who sat through the budget season knows, it isn't easy. And it's a lot of late nights, it's a lot of hard work, and yes, emotions do run high, but the process is the process, and now we have a budget. But the dust is now settled, and the budget is in place. And I just want to remind everybody which, what makes Winston so special. We're neighbors first. We have a budget, now we get to go back to being neighbors. Some of the things that we did differently this year when it came to pushing out the budget was, we were obviously out on our social media channels. We were very engaged on our town's website. We had the board up on the town green very early, I think two weeks before. We, first, were advertising the annual town budget meeting, and then, secondly, once we adjourned the annual town budget meeting, we reminded everybody when the vote would actually take place on that Tuesday. Something different that came up, it was, it was a suggestion, and I readily looked into it, is we were on the radio station. Not only did we advertise the annual town budget meeting, but then we advertised when the actual vote was. And when I say the word advertise, a lot of people think that there's a cost involved to it. There was no cost to the town when the local radio station picked up the story and did repeated stories, and I'm just going to stop right, and it just turned back on. I just saw the monitor turn off over there, so I didn't, not sure if we lost the YouTube connection. I caught it out of the corner of my eye. But some things that we did differently this year than we've done in the past is that we were trying to engage our residents more than ever. I am open to any suggestion possible of how we can engage more. I will note that, and it's not an excuse, several communities around Connecticut do have a problem bringing out voters to vote on a budget. It is one of the largest expenditures that the town obviously makes every, on the total budget. Yet, when you look at the numbers of referendums throughout the state, very few of them crack over that 10% match. In fact, there was a town, I won't name the town, but the budget actually failed, yet it passed, and per their charter, if not enough people come out, it automatically goes through. So there's a town that actually, their residents came out, voted the budget down, yet the budget still passed because it didn't meet the threshold of the amount of voters that come, come out. Again, we did things differently. We'll do things differently again next year. I want as many people, this board wants as many people, obviously, to vote on a municipal budget. I, I thought the things we did this year were clever. They, they touched people that listen to the radio, people that are on social media, people that use our websites. Everbridge is growing. We still thought we'd be a little bit better with our subscriptions, but I'll take this opportunity to plug our Everbridge. Go under our town's website, sign up, you can get emailed and/or text messages of updates that are going on. But again, this is a plea to not only the resident that spoke, but all residents. If you have an idea, we are all ears. It was a simple idea that came from this board. What about a radio station? And look, we were on the radio constantly and follow-up stories. And then, and I was appreciative of the follow-up story of after the budget even passed, that they, they did the story, so they didn't go away. So I'm all ears when it comes to, you know, putting out ideas for, for the town budget. There is just one thing, because I do need to address it. The sign in Town Hall that was brought up, we do have one on order, a professional-looking one, so it's on order. We actually have two on order, one for each floor. So that's coming, but I wanted to hit that. Moving on to more, more things. Economic development. On the economic front, there is a ton to be optimistic about. We're continuing to see strong interest from developers. Two national companies have made commitments in Winston. Obviously, we know Marshalls is moving forward. That should be open. The big question is, is when are they opening? I heard this summer. It's going to probably be in the fall, but I promise you, if you're going to do holiday shopping, that store will be open for all your holiday gifts. Secondly, as I mentioned, that the, the town annual budget meeting, Domino's Corporate is moving into our Main Street as well. So that's pretty exciting, that we have two national tenants. The investment speaks volume about the direction our town is headed in. Let's not lose hope. Let's stay optimistic, and let's continue these investments into our town. I also want to highlight a huge milestone. 108 East Lake Street, it's that old convalescent home, officially closed on Friday with a developer that ended up paying the back taxes and also the blight. That developer has over 15 years' experience of doing this, highly funded, and they are looking to turn that into 20 or 30 condos. I hope to be cutting that ribbon in the not-so-distant future, but that has officially closed. We do have new owners of 108 East Lake Street on Friday. Got a little nervous. They were supposed to close on Thursday, and then I got a phone call, it's not happening, and I got real nervous, and then ended up scheduling it for Friday, and it's officially closed in new owners' hands. So with the budget behind us, and unlike last summer, and I think that slide that I put up at the annual town budget meeting, where last year I had 63 days where I didn't have to worry about a budget. It was either the budget we're in now, or the budget we're moving forward. I just had 63 days, and that's what happens when, obviously, you know, we have, we have failed budgets. So now I get to turn my attention on growing the grain list. And there are four sites in particular that I want to publicly put out there, let this board know that I'm going to be laser-focused and putting a lot of my attention on. First one's going to be that Wallens Hill. The location has potential, but it's going to require a careful, honest look. I'm exploring all of the options from the past and present. And right now, I believe, a public-private partner could be the best route for the town, but that's one area I want to concentrate on. Next area I want to concentrate on is our legacy buildings on Main Street. There's enormous on-tap potential here. I've already been in contact with one national company looking at taking on one of the buildings, and to put them in contact with that owner. No huge movement on that yet, but that is one of the buildings, but there's still plenty of opportunity. This is where I think we're going to need to partner with the state to unlock even more development. But the next area we want to look at, Wallens Hill, our legacy buildings. Then, moving on to the Sue Grossman Trail, it's more than a trail, everybody. I stated that at the last meeting. This could be the biggest economic catalyst that this town has ever seen or will see for the foreseeable, long-term future. This could create such a boom down in that area, because the trail isn't just a trail, but it's going to provide water and sewer all for that area, which we could bring in housing, we can bring in development, we can bring in industry, we could do so much down there that would increase our grain list, where all of our wishes could come true without ever having to ask any of our taxpayers to reach any deeper. Information that I was hoping to keep quiet, and it's big, was that the state of Connecticut, the Connecticut DOT, has come across with a $500,000 grant to help us match the $2 million federal money that we were granted a little over two years ago. If you remember back about a year ago, I had the unfortunate pleasure of letting this board know that the $2 million that we were getting from a direct federal grant was that we need to come up with $500,000. And when we brought our working group together, they worked tirelessly. They still continued to work tirelessly to move this project forward. But the thing that stood above it all was, how are we going to get this $500,000? Happy to report with Tom Herschel, if you haven't met him. He worked tirelessly, persisted on me to continue to make phone calls to the Connecticut DOT to try and get this $500,000 match. We were awarded it. I can confirm it, because on Thursday, we got the commitment, the fund letter, for 500 grand. It was released on Facebook this weekend. We, as a group, wanted to hold back, not because we didn't want to share great news with you, but because when we came out with the news, we actually wanted to share the full development with you and the plans with you, which makes a lot more sense that, hey, not only did we get 500 and 2 million, this is what it's going to do. So unfortunately, the news got released this weekend. It was sent over to me late Friday, and then again on Saturday, it was a little, you know, salt in the wounds. But the great news is, is we got the $500,000 match. That's going to put towards unlocking the $2 million. All of it's there. Now the real hard work begins, and we're going to make the announcement, but I'm going to make the announcement bigger and grander when we have the actual development plans. We want to show everybody in the town. But I, I think some of our residents potentially saw that, you know, 500 was awarded. I didn't want to ignore it, so I did want to mention, we did get the 500K from the state of Connecticut, the CT DOT, and we thanked them. And lastly, on what I'm going to be concentrating on, is traffic and, and, and the lane dieting measures. If you remember back a few weeks ago, maybe even two months ago, I was very proud to let you know that the DOT has signed off, and they were going to come in in early spring and start painting some of the lanes, start lane dieting everything down and, and see it. Unfortunately, I've not seen them out there. My calls have gone unreturned in terms of that aspect. But right now, when, on one side of the table, they're, they're giving us $500,000, it's like, okay, how hard do I want to push them? So we're pushing them, but we're respecting the process. I don't know, and if the answer was, because Eversource is out here on our streets, which slowed traffic down tremendously today and going to continue throughout the summer, but that is on the radar, but furthermore, than paint, what are we really going to do about calming our traffic down? So those are the four things, really quick, again, because I want to put in publicly, Wallens Hill, legacy buildings, Sue Grossman Trail, and obviously, our, our traffic issues on Main Street are the four areas that you're going to see me now laser-focused on. I won't tell the other things I did, but those four key things should help our grain list grow. Again, moving on, and I know I'm going way over my allotted time, if there was one. Animal control. As you know, the Sarah Smolik dog case was back in court on Friday. I was there. Happy to report that 10 dogs have been released to Winchester and are eligible for adoption as of that day. We are going to be back in court for two weeks for the remaining 11 dogs. Can't say enough about the rescues and the volunteers who stepped up and that are working tirelessly to help these animals. But the case is on the way. I can't go too in-depth, because obviously, a court case, there's a civil matter, there's a criminal matter. But town of Winchester, from the court, did get 10 dogs on Friday. They're starting to get adopted out. We have to go back to court in two weeks to deal with the 11 other dogs, but we're, we're moving along in the, in the Sarah Smolik animal case. And last but not least, the Eversource gas lane replacement work continues on Main Street. I did place a call today. What they told us was that they were going to be in the median. Well, they were right outside my office window, and they were so close to those islands out there today. You can see where they, they literally cut the road. I need to follow up on that, because that is not in the median. That's literally right down the gut of, you know, the main road. So I'm waiting to hear back from them. Fortunately, they did not cut the road. I did watch them today. They must have got a little extension from Connecticut DOT, because they were not off the road. because they were not off the road at four o'clock. Um, they weren't even sweeping the road at four o'clock. I, I am keeping them to, you know, their toes. But again, stay alert. I, I wanna also commend our officers and our flaggers. I saw several occasions when I had the chance to look out my window to watch our officers and the flagmen literally walk patrons across the street so they wouldn't, you know, hit any car or have any cars hit them or anything like that. Um, so that's been really good. I will note, um, if you do need to park on Main Street, hug that curb as tight as you can. Unfortunately, uh, a vehicle did lose its mirror today. Uh, happened to be one of our staff. Um, so hug those curbs as much as you can, but, uh, hopefully they'll be out of that area as quick as possible. And lastly, let's keep the momentum going. There's a lot happening and even more opportunities ahead. As always, to this board, thank you for your support and your commitment to making Winston a better place for everybody. That'll open it up for questions.
Any questions from the board? So, no questions. Moving on to the item that was added. Candy, the referendum discussion.
Yeah. I wanna be sensitive about how I introduced this and start talking about it. I was sitting at AMP on Saturday night and I was, I've been thinking about this, right? Um, because I saw a couple of things during the referendum that I feel, um, well, I'll talk about that. So I'm, I'm sitting in AMP trying to figure out how, how to do this because, you know, you sit at AMP and there's a program there and you think you're in Winston and look at all the positive things that have happened, like AMP. And then you look down the street and there's a lot of positive things that happen. So I don't want this to take away from positive things, but we also know that it's important for our community, for our residents to have confidence when we hold a referendum and confidence when we hold elections, uh, just like at the national level when they call for it. We wanna make sure that that confidence is there. So there were a couple things that occurred, um, that were decided, and I don't know who, uh, but it was decided. So having said all that, there's two issues I think we, as a board of selectmen, need to, whether we address them tonight or whether we have, uh, another discussion about it afterwards, but there's, and I think it will need further discussion. But the first decision I wanna talk about is the decision to hand count the ballots, the paper ballots. And I know there was a post about why, and I know I was sorta told why, and it was supposed to be a, um, money-saving effort and whatnot. And, and that part is commendable, right? That people are looking out for the, uh, you know, the good of the taxpayer, good of the town and everything. But there's been a lot of questions about the hand count. And, and, and for me, having been through the discussions when we were at Gilbert, not being able to have a machine going forward, and that part of the charter was adjusted so that at Gilbert during a town meeting, it could be a hand count or a machine count. Um, I suppose that may have led to some confusion on some people's parts, but the charter is very clear in terms of our budget referendum vote is supposed to be by, by machine vote. It, it's very clear. It's like in the first sentence. Um, so I guess we need to figure out who made that decision and who has the authority to make that decision to change it from a machine count to a hand count when the charter is clear with what it says. So I think that, um, I don't know exactly where that discussion started or came from, uh, but I know that this board was not informed of it. Um, and, and I don't know, uh, who was in on it, but it's, uh, it, the charter. It's, you know, the charter, and it's either the charter, you change it, or the charter is, you follow it. And I'm sorry that it might've been expensive, but it built, again, it's a confidence of what we have and what we don't have. And then the second issue, I just want you to know that I had other outlets to do this, you know, to bring this up, but I chose not to. I, I chose to try to solve it as a, as a local issue, right? I, I chose to solve it as a local issue. That's what I chose to do. I'm not saying what other people are choosing to do, but, but I did. The, the second issue, I think we need to figure out what happened with. And I don't know if this was an oversight or how it all happened, but there needs to be public notice, right? We talk about public notice in government all the time, right? People also talk about transparency all the time. I hear that all the time. So when there was a change in, whenever there's a change in, in voting dates or times, there should be public notice. Public notice includes the town website. Public notice includes the town social media page. Public notice means, uh, putting it on the town clerk's board or putting it outside in the little case that's out, out, outside out there. Uh, it may, maybe making a little press release for a newspaper. And that's usually what public notice means. And public notice is important so that everybody has an opportunity to know about what's happening. So what happened was, the official call of the meeting for the referendum, referendum on the twenty-seventh is out there. It's under legal notices. And in the legal notice, it talks about the referendum on Tuesday, and it talks about the days that the town clerk's office is open. Nowhere in any of that legal notice did it talk about Saturday. Last Saturday, the town clerk's office was open for absentee ballots. You could say, well, that's, you know, that's really good because, you know, Connecticut, we all talk about having more opportunities to vote. And, you know, Frank brings up, we want everybody to vote. And you could talk about the fact that, yeah, we just get everybody out to vote. That's great. Another opportunity to vote. So from that side, I think, okay, well, that's commendable that, that we're going to do that, except that there was no public notice. So Saturday was added as an additional date, and it was posted on a political RTC Facebook post that came out Friday, at some point, Friday later in the afternoon, evening, about that town hall was gonna be open up on, on, uh, Saturday. There was a further post about it that was gonna be open up on Saturday for weekenders, right? And so, you know, somebody calls me and says, do you know about this? I go, no, I don't know about it. Um, not that I have to know everything, but when it's, you know, it's something that concerns the board of selectmen. I don't even know if all of you knew it. I have no idea. Um, there was a decision made to open up town hall on Saturday morning. And I don't believe it was, everybody knew. I know our town manager didn't know, cause when I called and asked him, uh, it, he didn't know. But then, so, you know, a little time went by, and then, you know, the, the, the budget, you know, it passed, um, which, which was a really good thing in, in my eyes. I mean, that's me. I have signs out in front of my yard and all that kinda stuff. Uh, but I also found out that there was other information that some people got on Thursday afternoon around at least two o'clock in the afternoon, that town hall was going to be open on Saturday morning for voting. And I think it's that public notice piece that really concerns me, that how did some people know? Was it a select group of people that were told? Not everybody got to know. Did it have to be weekenders? Could it have been, you know, somebody down the street who's really busy with their kids and can't make it on Tuesday cause they work out of town? It could've been a lot of people, and I think that it could've been handled a whole lot differently. And so I wanna make sure that, A, it's on the record, and B, that it's solved so that when we have our elections this coming November, that things are handled properly. You know, I, I, I know there's a couple other election things from last, last fall that I had some concerns about, but that, that's a different story. So I give this all to this board because it is not something that I alone can solve. I mean, I, I, I alone could make a complaint to the state, but I did not because I came here instead. So hopefully, uh, we can figure this out and make sure that all proper lines of notice, all proper lines of decision-making are in the hands of all the right people and not something that was just decided somewhere else that, that all of a sudden there it was.
So I'm just curious, Candy, isn't there, um, like, open voting all the way to the vote? I mean, isn't there absentee ballots? I mean, there's, there's all different ways that you could vote early, correct?
Well, actually, the Constitution Amendment from the fall was passed by the people in the state of Connecticut. However, it only gave the legislature the opportunity to make changes to absentee ballot voting. And the state legislature has not acted on that just yet. But absentee ballot voting, you can be, one of the reasons that you can absentee ballot vote right now is that you're not in town. And it's not a question about whether somebody should have the right to absentee ballot vote. My question, or my concern, is it wasn't publicly noticed. There was no public notice of it.
Well, I, I, I mean, you said you saw it on RTC thing, and I'm sure it was on Facebook, too. So there was notice, right?
So is the RTC in charge of public notice?
No, they just, we were-
So how did the RTC know?
They probably just carried it forward.
How did the RTC-
When you find out information, you carry it forward.
But how did the RTC know? Because did the Democratic Town Committee Chair get notified?
I don't know. I'm just saying, there's, there's ample opportunities to vote early. So I don't see how this is any different than any other avenue of voting early and why somebody didn't have a chance. I mean, I, it's-
Because it wasn't publicly noticed, and everything's supposed to be publicly noticed when it comes from government.
I think Candy means publicly noticed by town sources. I think that, so the town's Facebook page, the town's social media sites.
Because I checked every website, every department that was connected to the referendum to see if it was there, and maybe I missed it. I checked Tuesday, the boards.
But I still don't understand. I understand what you're trying to get at, but there, I mean, at the end of the day, it didn't jeopardize anybody anything.
Right, but just because it didn't jeopardize anything doesn't mean that it was right. Like, I could've just said, hey, the budget voted, and I could've like not brought it up here and wait for the onslaught that I usually stir up, right? Cause usually somebody has something about something I said, right? So I'm trying to do it in a way to be respectful of what happened. I can file with the state election commission a complaint, and then we'll find out if it's right or wrong. Uh, we can find all that out. Uh, I decided not to do that. I've, I've never done that. So I, I figured I would do it here. I mean, somebody here must have the answer to these two issues, the, the waiving the machine vote, and how an additional day that was not included in the legal notice gets posted so that the public would know, especially when we know that people knew on Thursday. When I thought it was Friday afternoon, I was like, okay, well, maybe it's just a, you know, a timing issue, but the town manager didn't know. That's pretty significant in my mind, that his building is open and he didn't know. Cause when I asked if he knew, I'm not trying to put anybody on the spot here. Yeah, so, so I just think that this has to be corrected. So if no one has any other suggestions or anything, I would think that perhaps a, uh, a group from this board, a bipartisan group, uh, maybe meet with the registrars to talk at least about the machine vote.
I think that's probably appropriate. Um, I think we have the charter set, so we don't need anything on notice. I don't think we need to put an ordinance or anything together, cause we have the charter for that.
I mean, public notice is public notice. It's usually given. As long as it's only about, somebody forgot to make a public notice. Hopefully, there was nothing, an intent behind any of that. And I hope that it was a decision that was made in this building. So, so that's enough for me.
Anyone have anything else? Okay. Moving on to item number seven, correspondence. Anyone have anything? Item eight, boards and commissions. Troy?
Okay. Um, so I'm gonna pay attention and make sure I mention names tonight. Um, so we have an reappointment, um, for Mike Farrell to the Water and Sewer Commission. He's a Republican, and he's a full member, and his term ends six twenty thirty. So we don't need to vote, vote on that. Um, oh, we do.
Unaffiliated on that Republican.
Okay, you're listed as an R.
I make a motion, I make a motion to reappoint Mike Farrell to the Water and Sewer Commission with the term ending six twenty, twenty thirty.
Second half.
All right. Thank you, Candy. Thank you, Troy. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous?
Okay, then unfortunately, we have another resignation. Um, this came in, I believe, today from George Clausen. He's, uh, resigning from the Water and Sewer Commission. Um, he's a Democrat and is, he's a full-time member. Um, and there is a little letter somewhere here from George that I'm gonna read. Um, this is-
You probably don't have to read it.
No? Okay. All right. Um, and then we go down to consideration. Yeah, thank you, George, for your years of service. Um, we know that, uh, you've done a lot for this town, and we appreciate it. Um, then we go down to consideration, which is gonna be full of the nominee, nominations and appointments. Those are getting moved up because of a error. So, uh, under consideration, we have, uh, Sally Chesney, um, looking to get on the Conservation Commission. The party's Democrat. She's looking for a full-time seat, and her term would end five of twenty twenty-seven. Then we have Addie-
Sally.
No, Addie M-E-H-L. I don't know how to pronounce that. Mel. Uh, looking to get on the coverage Conservation Commission also. Party is unaffiliated. She's looking for a full-time seat and term would end five twenty twenty-nine. Um, then we have Stuart Pollins, looking to get on the Historic Commission. He's just a resident, um, no party affiliation, looking for a full-time seat. Term would end twelve of twenty twenty-five. And then we have Anita Garnett, looking to get on through the Winchester Housing Authority. Party is Democrat, um, looking for a full-time seat. Her term would end four twenty twenty-eight. That's all I have.
Uh, before we move on, I just wanna reach out, uh, and thank George Clausen personally. For the last four years that I was on the Water and Sewer Commission with him, he brought a lot of knowledge and experience to that board, uh, helped us move it forward quite a bit. I'm sad to see him go, but I have the utmost respect for him as a leader in this town, like Troy said. I, I certainly have learned a lot from him. So, so thank you, George, for everything you did with us guys there.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you.
And just, uh, just a reminder, we have several openings. Architectural Review Committee, Conservation Committee, Cultural District, the Historic Commission. The Housing Authority has an Open Sea Inland Wetlands, the Laurel City Commission. Their work is just finishing up this month, but right around the corner, they'll be needed again. Recreation Board and Zoning Board of Appeals all have openings. Item nine, unfinished business. We have nothing. Item ten, Bridge Street update. Town Manager Harrington, Public Works Director Rollins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Rollins. Uh, there was a question at, uh, board of selectmen meeting two weeks ago about Bridge Street. Uh, Jim wanted to come in and, and, and update the board on Bridge Street. And he's also here for the line item transfer twenty-five, uh, dash one seven, uh, one seven. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to, uh, Mr. Rollins for a Bridge Street update.
So, yeah, uh, like Tom Andrew Harrington just stated, two weeks ago at the Board of Selectmen meeting, um, Troy had asked about the status of the Bridge Street intersection, and I didn't have an answer for him. Um, still don't have a good answer for you. The, the situation over there is- The situation over there is, some of you remember, we got a pretty sizable grant to redo that intersection to make it, you know, more drivable, safer for pedestrians and motorists, and it's been engineered, it's been designed, it's essentially ready to go out to bid with just a few little tweaks. The holdup is the gas main that had to go in there had to go in first, they had to change the depths of it, rah rah rah. And then part B of that is the gas company is putting a gas main across Bridge Street Bridge, so they're gonna be in there. They were supposedly gonna be out of there by the end of June. They haven't even started yet, so I don't know what their timing is. Our next step, we really wanted to get the, the basic intersection plan painted on the ground first to see how it works, because nobody loves the design, it's just the best we could come up with. So we actually wanted to paint it on the ground so that people can get used to it, and we can get feedback before we spent big money on doing it right. And I really wanted it to be painted during the busy summer season, because that's probably the busiest intersection, or that's probably the busiest time of year for that intersection because of all the people heading up to the lake. So, you know, we're hoping that they can get in and out, and then we can get this painted and at least catch the second half of summer with summer usage. So that's the best I can do for an update. It really hinges on, you know, when they get off the bridge. We, you know, just, just, the other day, we were discussing, can we just go and, you know, mark the road up now? And it doesn't make any sense because they're gonna be digging it up, so all that cost would go for nothing, you know, because it's not cheap to, to paint the roads. So that's, that's the update. So.
Just, just to, hang on one second, just to add to that, Jim, I don't want to put you on the spot, but that gentleman, Mr. Farrell, spoke about the fence. Is there something we could do to fix that fence, please?
Well, first, let me say, he's not wrong really about anything he said. There's a number of complaints, not just by him. It just gets lost on the desk filled with other requests, and we typically go to what seems like either the biggest liability or the biggest improvement for the most people first. It's essentially triage decision-making, and that one never made it to the top of triage, you know? The answer's as simple as that, and it's also as uninspiring as that.
Well, after tonight, can we move it up the list a little?
It'll, it'll-
Because I bet by that, I know exactly what you're talking about.
So it'll go to the top of the list, whether it stays there long enough to get accomplished in his timeframe or yours remains to be seen, because that's just the nature of how the calls come in. But it, it was noted, all the, all the reasons, and I do have to, he's not wrong, we should have gotten to it a long time ago. That's, yeah, that's all I can say.
Nature of the business, understood. I know exactly what you're talking about, but I did see that myself, so.
So my question is, so Bridge Street intersection with, I'm not sure the name of the street, but the package store there, I know there's water problems coming down that hill, is that gonna be addressed-
Yes.
-with this, too?
Yes.
Because remember, Mr. Lundlin likes to bring up stories, and I know there was something with drainage further up, whether there was a spring or something. I thought it was maybe a water leak, but then he said it was a spring leak.
It's not a water, it's not a water main, it's not municipal water. It's-
Right.
It's groundwater-
Groundwater.
From some source, we, we keep chasing it up the hill.
Right.
We'll chase it uphill again, and as soon as we chase it uphill, we put active drainage, it dries at the drainage point. It just weeps out ten feet above. I, I don't know if we'll ever catch it if we go all the way up.
Is that part of Canaveral Spring, maybe?
I hope not.
It's, it's groundwater.
Could be a spring up further than, no one even knows.
When the gas company was in there, we got, we got in their trench, there's, there's a hodgepodge of pipes going up there. We think it was water management from when they put the water mains in some twenty years ago. Those weren't carrying water, but the water's coming out somewhere. The drains on the sides of the roads all seem to be working. But to answer your question, we'll chase it uphill, at least beyond the work area that is being done as part of the intersection.
Yeah.
Whether it pops out further up or not.
You know, that's, that's the problem.
Tough to say.
Troy knows, you do new pipe, new stuff in the ground, you put stone around it, now it's a place for the water to travel.
Yeah.
Any other questions on Bridge Street?
Are you still talking about a rotary or roundabout? No, what, what is, what is the configuration going to be?
The, the roundabout or the rotary, traffic circle, whatever you wanna call it, in theory, works well with the type of traffic and the complexity of the intersection, but because of the side slope on there, and the engineers said it's just not the right application. We, and as big as that intersection is, to have a fully functioning traffic circle there, we would have needed that to be even a little bit bigger, and it just wasn't in the cards, so.
So, so what is the traffic pattern going to be?
It's gonna be, it's, it's too hard to explain. It's essentially just narrowing everything up and exaggerating the turn, so you have to actually stop and see where people are coming from instead of just blow through intersections like they do now. Again, there's no good, there's no good option.
So no more one-way?
Yes, there's, there is still a one-way going up Bridge Street.
Okay.
So, again, the, once we, once we mark it out, it'll be a lot easier to see. And will everybody love it? No? Will enough people love it? Probably, I, I, if I could think of a better solution, I mean, I could think of a better solution, but that's not, that's not open to us. We, we'd really like to extend Depot Street-
Yeah, yeah.
-right down through Carnell, is it Carnell? Burwell.
Burwell.
And then head down to Case Avenue, but that's-
That's not gonna work.
That property's not available to us, so it, you know, that's gonna keep that intersection a giant mess.
Thank you.
But less of a mess, I think, when we're done. At least that's the hope.
So you're gonna use curbing to direct people, or are you gonna use?
Well, for now, we're gonna paint it, but then, yeah, curbing, curbing and raised sidewalks and raised crosswalks and all that stuff will, you know, essentially slow it down and make people pay attention.
And they'll have to go that way, so.
And it's gonna create much smaller crosswalks, because that's, that's the killer. You can't even get across that intersection, and you got people coming out of Ten Bridge Street, and they don't know where to go, which side of the street, which side of the, the stop sign to go on, you can't see, like bump into traffic. I guess it would be east in that coming up Bridge Street. It opens up visibility to Ten Bridge Street, so, again, there's, there's no silver bullet, but we had a lot of, a lot of people involved in getting it to, to where it's drawn now, and none of us could come up with something better. Who knows, maybe you get a bunch of people driving it, and someone will come up with an idea that wasn't thought of and doesn't have more downside than upside, and we can implement that into the plan when we put it to bid in the wintertime. But that's why we want to paint it and get it used-
Good idea.
-and try to get, you know, the real, the feedback from the real world rather than from, you know, engineering principles.
Yeah, I had the privilege of walking that intersection when we were picking up garbage that day, so.
It's awful.
It's tough, I was looking at it, that's tough because of the slope, because the train used to come through there and everything. So the, the plans are engineered, are they available? Because I just would like to-
I think maybe on the website.
Are they on the website or in the office somewhere? Because I, I just want to-
They're in the office, or in the office, but we-
You know, there's a similar thing that they did, they did in Torrance over by the, with the North End McDonald's with the movie theaters and play facilities. They did use paint there and some of those, the stanchions that they're called, and so.
Yeah, a little, yeah.
On that note, make sure you are aware of tractor-trailer trucks, because that's the problem that happened in Torrance that opened by the movie theater. They made it too sh- too small, and the tractor-trailer trucks are having a real hard time getting through there.
I think the biggest issue is, is the hill. How do you make it so you're like this? I mean, even on the motorcycle, you come up, I gotta take it high, because if I get too low, my legs are short. I don't wanna lean to the left, I won't be able to, like, walk over, so.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Yeah?
Yeah, it's, you know, again, the, the engineering standards have truck traffic in mind-
Yeah.
-but the real world, you, it can look good on paper, but you throw the slope into it-
Yeah, that fits the slope.
-and it doesn't look like it's a tractor-trailer zone, but you get stuff coming from Sterling and, you know, engineering down.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, I've seen them.
And that's how they exit, so it's, again, this is why we wanna, we wanna paint it before we build it, because it's, but we had to get EverSource out of our way first, so.
Anything else on Bridge Street?
Mr. Mayor, if I would, because the door was open, and, and, and I'm saying this only because I want the public to know. Mr. Farrell, you know, you and I have emailed a bajillion times. The emails that were sent in twenty twenty-four, I wasn't here. January twenty twenty-five, I'll take ownership, because I was here. You know, if I saw it, you would have definitely got a response from me, but this will be hanging in my office until it's no longer hanging in my office, which means it's fixed.
It's the safety part.
It's the safety part. What I want the community to know, that when you reach out to the town manager, you do get a response, as, you know, Mr. Farrell knows, whether it's late at night, early in the morning, I'll respond. If I missed the email in January twenty twenty-five, I'm shocked at myself, I'm gonna go back and see if I can find it, but I got it. Mr. Rollins and I will talk, but, yeah, we'll look at it. And again, if you didn't get a response from me, you know it's unlikely, because I always respond to everybody, just acknowledging it was there, maybe not necessarily, so I just wanted to bring that up. Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Moving on to item B, twenty-five dash one seven, proposed line item transfer by the Director of Finance.
Mr. Rollins and I are both gonna walk you through, as you see, twenty-five dash one seven. We, we started the look at, obviously, closing out fiscal year twenty-five. First item, obviously, is our general labor in the Public Works Department will be underspent because we did have people that left us, we had positions that have gone unfilled. So there's, you know, roughly eighty-eight thousand. So the first thing we want to do is we want to obviously replenish the overtime line item that has been overspent. First item, and then the, the remaining two items is maintenance of vehicle and fleet repairs. And Mr. Rollins, you wanna take them through the thirty and the twenty?
Yeah, so maintenance of vehicles, that's three eleven eight twenty-six, a very heavily used line item for our department, trying to keep that fleet going and, you know, operational plow trucks especially are just money pits, especially the old ones. So we got to, you know, the end of last month, and we were on fumes in that department, or in that line item. So all I did was prorate how much we were spending per month and just extrapolate that out over the next two months so that we had enough to keep that pace going. Oftentimes, this time of year, it slows a little bit, just because they're really assessing trucks, they're spending a lot of time doing that, assessing them, putting their list together so they can get busy on it over the summer and have them ready for, for winter. So it tends to slow down, but since we had that eighty-eight thousand, I wanted to put it into that account just so that they, if they could start ordering parts and getting them in stock, the sooner the better, because then it speeds up the, the build process later, because we, we always lose time, you know, waiting for the budget. And then last year, when it didn't pass, it put us way behind, and it really made it, made it tough to catch up. So we, we wanted to add thirty thousand to that, and that will easily get us through the rest of the season. The fleet repairs line, fleet repairs is, it's kind of a, a mini-capital line that we have. It's, it's for stuff that's not big enough to be considered capital, and it's to just kind of replace and refurbish and upgrade, you know, vehicles and equipment. And basically, that twenty thousand is gonna go to a reversible vibratory plate compactor to minimize the settling in the trenches when we, when we excavate. Right now, we're doing it with a jumping jack, which is a lot better than what they used to use, but we need to go another level to, to make that part of our work more, more efficient and done once and done right. That was maybe five thousand of that money. The other fifteen thousand, we had put into the capital budget a replacement vehicle for the Superintendent of Streets. He's the one that's on the road the most, he's the one that's making stuff happen, he's the one that basically builds the list of things that have to be done and checks on it, and he's just on the road nonstop. His truck, we wanted to move down into a different position that doesn't drive so much and replace his. Well, that did not make it into the, the capital budget. So we tried to scramble, because, again, we're trying to keep these vehicles as long as we can, and just running one long and hard wears them out prematurely. If we can stagger on the lighter duty use, we're gonna get better cost effectiveness out of it. So what we did is we transferred his truck back here to the, the facilities maintainer, who doesn't put anywhere near the miles on, but it's a perfectly adequate vehicle for him, moved his vehicle over to Phil, and we're gonna add a utility body, so he's got everything he needs with him all the time, saving just countless miles and hours of driving back to the shop to get stuff. So that was about fifteen thousand of that. So that's where those two lines are going to. So essentially, we got what we needed for, you know, roughly seventy thousand dollars less than if we had bought new, so.
The thought behind this as well is, we are looking to, you know, address items in next year's budget with some potential surplus, definite surplus money in the Public Works budget, with hopes that next year, we don't have as many issues and potentially return surplus money in the maintenance of vehicles and the fleet repair line item. It's kind of pre-funding items, get them going now that we have a budget. We're confident with the numbers that we will have eighty-eight thousand, and, and actually, a little bit more than that, in the general labor money, transferred into, into these three line items now to, obviously, A, top off the overtime line item because of the winter that we had, and then start looking at these vehicles, start addressing them now.
Motion.
Motion.
I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the line item transfer of eighty-eight thousand dollars from line one dash three one dash one nine four dash zero 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 dash zero 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 zero. General. Eight thousand for line item one dash three one one dash one nine seven dash zero 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 dash zero 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 zero. Overtime, thirty thousand dollars for line item one dash three one one dash eight two six dash zero 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 dash zero 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 zero. Maintenance of vehicles and twenty thousand dollars to line item one dash three one one dash eight two six dash zero 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 one dash zero 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 zero. Fleet repairs for a total transfer of eighty-eight thousand dollars.
Second. Can you just amend your motion, because you read the number wrong, it's on the page wrong, it should be one dash three one one dash one nine four dash zero 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 zero.
Oh, because it's missing the one?
It's missing the second one.
So, yes, I amend my motion for that.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? Moving on to item C, twenty-five dash one eight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So these funds are gonna be transferred out of the Assistant Town Clerk's salary line to the position absent that has resulted in lower-than-expected expenditures. In that line, additionally, a portion will be reallocated for the restoration of Records Line, as we now anticipate expending the full budget amount by June thirtieth. Expenses incurred that were looking to roughly a little over a thousand dollars incurred are related to the Atkins printing costs and the reconfiguration of the Hicks Room, which we did bring our town clerk in to help set this beautiful room up.
Do you have a motion?
I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the line item transfer of three hundred dollars from one dash one two zero dash one nine one dash four zeros dash four more zeros, Assistant Town Clerk, and seven hundred and fifty dollars from one dash one twenty dash eight zero nine dash zero 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 two, and then four more zeros. Oof, awful lot of zeros here, in the amount of seven hundred and fifty dollars to three hundred dollars for one dash one twenty dash one nine seven dash four zeros dash four zeros. Compensatory time, two hundred dollars for one dash one twenty dash eight oh six dash four zeros dash four zeros. Office supplies and five hundred and fifty dollars. One twenty dash eight two eight dash zero 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 two dash four zeros. Indexing system for a transfer total of one thousand and fifty dollars. Am I, I'm zeroed out.
That's a mouthful.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you.
Item D, not A, twenty-five dash one nine refunds is recommended by the Collector of Revenues.
I didn't catch that. T, F, E, F, wow. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, did not catch it on the agenda. Before you tonight is a recommendation from our tax collector in the amount of nine thousand eight hundred and twenty-four dollars. As you'll see on the sheet, they are all over payments for the one, two, three, four, five particular entities totaling just over ninety-eight hundred dollars.
Motion.
I move that the Board of Selectmen-
I move that the Board of Selectmen authorize the refunds recommended by the Collector of Revenue in the amount of nine thousand eight hundred and twenty-four dollars and twenty-eight cents. And thank goodness, there's no more zeros.
Is there a second? Thank you, Linda. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Thank you.
Unanimous? Item E, actions on items relating to finalizing the town's fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six mill rate.
So when you pass a budget on the first time, we get to actually, or you all get to set the actual mill rate now and we can get the bills out on time. So before you tonight, and it will be a signature needed, is to set the tax rate for real estate, personal property, and motor vehicles to be set at twenty-nine point one seven mils. Based on the grant list of October first, twenty twenty-four, I'll note that that twenty-nine point one seven mils is exactly what we've been promoting when we were putting out all of the proposed budgets. Real estate would be due on July first, twenty twenty-five, and January first of twenty twenty-six. Personal property, July first, twenty twenty-five, and January first of twenty twenty-six. Motor vehicles due July first, twenty twenty-five, and supplemental motor vehicle due January first, twenty twenty-six. And yes, that does includes the thirty-day period of before interest is starting to be charged.
And you said we could set it, but you just said it.
No, you would have to vote on it.
You said we could set it.
Oh.
So I would change the mill rate to twenty-seven point one seven? You said it, I'm sorry, that's what you said.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Motion is for the mill rate at twenty-nine point one seven.
You sure about that?
All in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you. I'll note, we'll get the bills out immediately. We'll start the whole process from our end, so. That's the official copy.
Sorry. Thanks. I ran with it.
Yes, you did. Moving on to item F, Town Manager Contract Addendum. This is on. Yep. So in front of each of you is the amendum, amend, amendum to the employment agreement of Town Manager Paul Harrington. This document is an addendum to the employment agreement that Town Manager Paul Harrington signed effective April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four between Paul Harrington and the Town Winchester, collectively referred to as the Parties. Whereas the Town and Paul Harrington agree that effective on, this should be revert back to his anniversary date, which would be April twenty-second. The employment agreement will be amended, sent forward below. Now, therefore, I, the Town, now, therefore, the Town and Paul Harrington agree as follows. It will be a public document. So we just need a motion to approve the addendum to the Town Manager's employment agreement.
I make a motion.
Effective April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five.
I make a motion to approve the amendment with the caveat of the April twenty-two, twenty twenty-five effectiveness.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any other discussion?
Should we talk about any of the little pieces?
Sure.
I've just, um, uh, that he does a little bit of a salary bump and mine with the regular contracts of other employees, correct?
That is correct.
So it's that. And the pension, we still put in the amount of pension that was designated, but he doesn't have to match it now.
Correct.
So that doesn't change what we would be putting in. It just changes that he is not matching medical and dental. He's going to be more in line with other employees in town with the age of age deductible and eighteen percent contribution. And then the other change is some car allowance because he doesn't have a car as people in the Public Works that we just heard from, or the people from the Building Department or anything else. So he will receive a little bit of an allowance for his car use on Town business.
Any other discussions?
I think one thing that was brought up, this did get sent over to the Labor Attorney. The Labor Attorney did review it. He did send it back to the mayor. So I know that was a question that was asked before. So the Town Labor Attorney did review the contract and then send it back to the mayor.
And we could not do it before this because we didn't have the money.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you, everybody.
Item eleven, Citizens Comments. The Board of Selectmen welcomes public comments. Speakers be limited to three minutes and may speak once. Please give your name and address who would like to speak. Frank?
Frank Oliveri, one oh eight Shore Drive. My question comes up with the bond issue we did in twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. I remember that I live on Shore Drive and that was in the fifth year or the fourth year of the program. The second year of the program, they came in and they did the strip, the crack line thing. Now, that was, my understanding at that time, that means that would be followed up with some sort of paving plan, whether it be a capital job or the rival land. But nothing's been done, so is it still on the list? Shore Drive on the original bond list?
Well, we might not be chipping on Shore Drive because of the proximity.
I know, but I mean, is it still in the bond?
We have the bond list.
If it was in the bonded, it will still be on the bond. If you mind, if it was, so when the town went out to referendum, all of the streets were listed at the referendum. Nobody has the power to remove one of the streets from it. So if Shore Drive was in it, and Frank, I apologize, off the top of my head, I can't remember all of the streets. There's a bunch. I can email you or call you. I don't even know, I have a way of contacting you.
But it's still in the plan.
If it was set originally in it, it will still be in the plan. We are still working off that bond, yes, yes. If it was in the plan, it stays in the plan, yes.
And I understand from the other discussions I had with you.
Yeah, because chips ceiling.
Right. No, we don't want chips ceiling dead, right.
Chips and the rain.
No, and I understand that. All right, just wanna know that it's still something to look forward to.
Yeah, so nothing, nothing could change on that bond. Nothing could be added, nothing could be deducted. Though that bond was set for specific, specific rules. We don't have the power to change them, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anyone else, Mr. Speaker?
Good evening, Michael Farrell, one forty-seven Shore Drive. Few quick things. Congratulations on the Sioux Grossman money and East Lake Street. Huge for this town. I sit in the Sewer and Water Commission and the Sioux Grossman Trail specifically opens up immense opportunities for us. So awesome feather in your cap there. Last item to discuss for me, it's kind of a pet peeve that I've had since I've been coming to meetings here at City Hall. Zoning Board of Appeals, Planning and Zoning, Sewer and Water, Board of Selectmen, and this is kind of a rhetorical question for you guys. Why do we lock Town Hall, City Hall, when we have meetings? There may be some history that I'm not aware of. Maybe it's a labor contract thing, somebody from Public Works has to be here, I don't know. But we do a great job with our social media. We want to engage our community. We want to engage our citizenry. We put our agendas and our minutes on social media. We ask you to be a part of our democratic process and then we lock you out. I don't understand that. It seems counterproductive. We can come in through the elevator, and I've been a part of two organizations in the last five years that have had to replace elevators, and you don't know the term sticker shock until you have to replace an elevator. So in the spirit of inviting our people into our flagship building, into our meetings, and showing a gesture of good faith and openness, I just can't imagine wanting to open a business or move here and come down to a meeting and the doors to City Hall are locked. It makes no sense to me. And I get it, we all, you know, we shepherd people into the elevator, but.
I think it's a security issue. When it happens.
Come in, I can still get in.
It's a security issue for the building and for after the meetings, right? But the other thing is, I mean, it could be solved with technology, just like schools have those magnet locks on the door.
I believe there is one on that.
That you can set them for times of meetings, let's say.
I think that somehow that door may communicate with the old dispatcher's console, I don't know, but.
I'm not sure, I haven't been involved in any discussions.
I don't wanna get into the weeds, I'm hoping that somebody.
But I do know that when we first started, because the building used to be wide open all the time.
Yeah.
The back door was, the back door was open, the front door was open. The things started happening out in the world that hadn't happened before.
Right.
And then people were found in our building that weren't supposed to be here.
And please understand that I'm only talking about during public meetings.
No, no, so the security came. And then there's a key that can, there's specific keys that you push that door in and it stays open.
I get it.
So you don't have to give everybody the keys.
Understood.
Or not, or, you know, maybe there's a.
This is two thousand twenty-five, though. Can't be that hard. If we're gonna invite people to be part of our process, let's not lock them out.
Technological piece that has to be done and then there has to be the people that could program it.
I'll leave it at this.
I'll tell you one thing that I did notice on a meeting thing is when you have Board of Assessment appeals on a weekend and they're inside and people come and that aren't used to coming to this Town Hall would miss meetings because they couldn't get in. They didn't know they had to go in the police department.
I think that, you know, having been in the building at other times, I put signs on the windows. I opened and put a little something inside the door. I know last weekend, there was a little something inside the door. So there are ways to keep the door open if the chairman of the committee or the people doing it went down and opened it with a little thing and then remembered to take it out later.
Well, I know you guys got a lot on your plate, but like I said, if I'm thinking of coming here and opening a business or I'm thinking of moving here and I wanna do some business or start, see how government runs, I think a really great first step would be to not lock me out. And let's not overburden what is already clearly a very tired elevator. And not for nothing, society can use a walk a few steps. So let's promote good health, let's promote open government, a welcoming environment, and let's unlock the damn doors of City Hall, please. Thank you.
Anyone else with a question to speak?
By the way, that elevator does not get stuck once in a while. Been there, done that. J. Mark, sixty-eight Overlook Road, Everbridge. Paul, I said, may I suggest? Everything you did for the referendum, you do for Everbridge because that's such a vital, important part of communication in our town. So, you know, everything you did, I can't list it because I can't remember everything you said. Just thought I'd suggest that, especially in emergency situations, we really need it, as many people on it as possible.
Thank you. Anyone else? Moving on to item twelve, Executive Session. Discussions on Town-Owned Properties, forty-eight Bridge Street, ninety-nine Hubbard Street, one twenty-four Rockwell Avenue. And B, Discussions Regarding Selection of a Site for the Lease, Sale, or Purchase of Real Estate.
Make a motion, we go into executive session with the Town Manager along with us.
And second?
Second.
And that is in reference to Connecticut General Statute, Section one dash two hundred, subsection six D.
Blue room's open, you had a motion and a second if you get the motion.
So in the blue room, all in favor? Unanimous at eight twenty-one?
Click your mics off before you head on.
Your mics are off, so my mic's back on. Yeah?
It is 9:10 PM. We are back from executive session. Item 13, new business possible action on executive session items. We have no actions to take. Item number 14, selectmen's comments and reports.
I just got one comment. The budget got passed. There was two things that people voted yes for, the school and the roads. I want to see some paving being done now that the budget's fixed.
Thanks, Troy.
Maybe we could have that clerk come in.
Yeah.
With Jim, that clerk that we hired out of the bond money.
Oh yeah, we have a new clerk.
I never met him, so that would be good.
No, I mean, it's supposed to be part of the bond and getting advancing all that, so maybe you have an idea to do that.
Yep, yep, I agree.
That gentleman's name is Gabe, and I will get that on meeting coming soon.
Anyway, we can just know what the schedule is for this stuff, if that's what you want.
Yeah.
And we all get an introduction to him, since he has moved away from that.
Any other comments?
Make a motion for adjournment.
No, no, I got something first. Thanks to everyone, both sides that came out to vote at the referendum last week. As you heard earlier, we would like to see more citizens' involvement in the election process, but thank you to everyone who came out and vote. Friday, June 13th is the Laurel Ball. Tickets are still available in the town clerk's office. It's always a good time, and it's at Crystal Peak.
Make motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor? Good night, thank you.